Oh my god, the cameras get lost in the dry talk. This is the fish. It's so small. I wondered where your camera was and I realized it was already in the camera.
Good evening. We have a few more people finishing up voting and then we will start. So you got probably another three or four minutes. Thank you.
My son and I went up to the water slide on Saturday.
How long?
It was, yeah, it was trails good. It was packed. The, um, the summer trail. I got going all the way. Yeah, so we just liked the trail. But I had to spend there for years. Just a little bit. We have a job right here. And it's my name this morning. And, uh, I know. I had to do a favor. They got the whole grid.
Yeah.
We went right up with the top of the rail. It's on, it's actually back. It's right here. Of course. So, I turned around to watch. Oh, yeah. So I'm going up, you know, like being right, you know, across. And I turned around and I looked. He said, oh geez, I'm serious. He said, we're down. After he's asleep. He's like, yeah, but we got something, uh, how am I? So we did get him. Cause I'm, I mean, I just, I mean, my step was only about six inches apart. And there was just a tall tower of, um, I just had to stand. But I had to, it was, it was. Across this rock there. It was so steep and so powerful. I mean, I think the snow just like melted its real butt. And it was very fast.
These children. Back when I was a little age, that was eighty-nine thousand. I forget how many. Talk about scraping. I was told by the selectmen if I needed a tire or a dump truck or something, get on the dump and see if somebody threw one away that I could get by with. I noticed that.
Good evening. My name is. Good evenings. My name is Christine Ordinis and I am the moderator of this town meeting. Um, I do call meetings in order. I would like me to all rise and we make pledges to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask you to please silence all cell phones. Uh, the procedure for this evening will be you are to address all questions to me. Only registered voters may speak unless you, the registered voters, agree to allow a non-registered person voter to speak. I'm asking you to stay on topic. I ask you to use a respectful tone of voice. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Violent insulting language is not allowed. Speak when you are recognized by the moderator. Please state your name and address. Do not interrupt a person speaking. Uh, even if a voter does not have the floor, they may raise what's called a point of order. If somebody out there thinks I am, um, out of order with the way things are proceeding, you may certainly bring it to my attention. We can discuss it. We have a procedure called restricting reconsideration. This means that once a warrant article has been discussed and voted on, a request and a motion may be made to restrict reconsidering it. That simply means that we cannot go back and we vote to bring up that topic again in this meeting. At the end of the meeting, if somebody wishes to revisit a warrant article and the consideration passes, we can reconsider the warrant article seven days after this meeting. I am going to read the warrant articles. I will have the article, someone needs to make a motion and have it seconded, then the floor will be open for discussion. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think there may be an absence of a forum here conducted.
Absence of a forum.
Should we have an operating votes here conducted?
Yes, everybody, registered voter, hold up your cards, please. Yes, we do have a forum. Thank you, sir. The select board will address any questions pertaining to any of the warrants in their department. We do not have somebody here from the road department, the road maintenance, and we will go out. You can speak anything about the planning board, right? Yeah, okay. Okay. Uh, the first article one, to elect all necessary officers for the year. We've just conducted the elections, but we don't have results. We're gonna take a while to tabulate them. Uh, so you're kind of electing officers blind, but the question is to elect all necessary officers of the year. Somebody make a motion?
I make a motion to accept article one as read.
Second. Any discussion about accepting elected officials? All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? The motion carries. The second article is article two, the operating budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars for the general town operations.
I make a motion to accept article.
Two is read.
I make a motion to second it.
The floor is open for discussion. State your name when you come up to the mic, please, and your address.
Anne Mulcathen, two forty-one Harriman Room, Dalton, New Hampshire.
I have a question for the select board. I want to know if the budget passes as is and the warrant articles pass, what will the town portion of our taxes be? Currently is three dollars and forty-two cents.
Can you step up to the mic a little?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for the patience. I know that we booked this and any amount that we give will be in the estimate because it also depends on the tax rate.
Well, the, uh, the tax rate that was set in the fall was twenty-three eighty-six, which was the famous previous year. And so the one that will be calculated in the fall of 2020 will depend on the budget, but it will also depend on the revenue.
What she's asking, Rose, is the town tax portion, if all those passes, your warrant articles pass, what's the impact on our tax rate?
I am not sure.
I know we had an option. But we were not sure of the exact number.
I might be able to help. I'm looking at four dollars and forty-eight cents.
What was it, ma'am?
Four dollars and forty-eight cents.
Five thousand. Right, and that's all of the budget, the warrant article. Now, is that with the?
That is without the school.
Right. With the numbers on this because there was also a sixteen thousand dollar correction? Right, so with the corrections in, following warrant articles passed, it would be four dollars and twenty-nine cents, assuming the same revenue.
This is just the town portion?
Correct.
When the school portion was like, which is now twelve ninety-eight per thousand, goes up as much as seventy-one cents more per thousand. Can you give us a couple of the law for one, please? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Town portion, which is, I had this four forty-eight. The school portion, which is now twelve point ninety-eight per thousand, could go up as much as seventy-one cents more per thousand. And tax rate would go up, dollar seventy-seven per thousand. County, go even higher. Which means that tax on the two hundred thousand dollar house, the bill would go up three hundred and fifty-four dollars more. Move for that. I'd like to look at some lines if people are interested in it to maybe skim a little bit off.
I'm going to ask the, um, people in attendance here, how many are willing to go through a couple of the line items on the budget with an eye on the total budget? Article two, the show with cards, if you're willing to do this? Hold on, hold on. Look, uh, we need blue cards. Okay, all opposed? Thirty-three. The, uh, requested denied.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to address article two? Okay, I'm putting to vote all people who are willing to vote and accept article two for the town budget of seven hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars for the general town operations. Blue cards, please. Any affirmative? All opposed? Eighteen. The motion carries. The budget's accepted.
How is the conference, what was the number?
Thirty-nine versus eighteen. Article three, shall the town modify the veterans' tax credit in accordance with RSA seventy-two twenty-eight-two from its current tax credit of five hundred per year to seven hundred and fifty per year? Majority vote is required on this. Motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept article three as read.
I second the motion. Any discussion, please? Yes, sir. You're there. Your name, please.
Kenyon Todd Hill, level one eighty-five, Landry Road in Dalton. And I'm a veteran. And I'd like to thank everyone from Dalton for over the past, what, eighteen years, probably. Given me about nine thousand dollars. You know, I didn't expect it when we first was here. Someone had to tell me that I was eligible for it. Signed off, got it, it ever since. But with taxes being what they are and, you know, we have a whole list of people in the back of the town vote here that a few of them can't or won't pay their taxes, um, I, I don't feel like I need to get a fifty percent increase in veterans' benefit. You know, I was proud to serve and I didn't expect anything. You know, I got sworn in the Navy and, and I missed the part where they said in thirty-six years you can get a tax benefit from Dalton, you know? I just don't think it's necessary. Uh, I, I don't, you know, I, I know I'm probably a vote against my own self-interest, but in the interest of the rest of the taxpayers at Dalton, who I think there's about sixty veterans at Dalton, um, figure that has about thirty thousand dollars a year to give it to us. And, and if you throw us another two fifty, that's forty-five thousand dollars a year. Somebody's options getting good so that I, you know, can get that benefit. Um, I don't think it's necessary, especially in these times where our taxes are, you know, going up. And I would oppose this and of all to it too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? For the motion to the vote, shall the town of Dalton modify the tax, veterans' tax credit to seven hundred and fifty dollars a year from five hundred a year? All in favor? All opposed? Twenty-five. We have a time.
Did you get your vote required, uh?
And according to state law, when it, I was about, the moderator has the option of voting and I vote to defeat the motion. Twenty-six to twenty-five. Would you like me to recount?
Yes.
I will do that.
Yes.
Okay. I will ask one of you to stand up and count with me, please. For all of you that care. All in favor? Please raise your blue card.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on your article, it says majority vote required.
I have a time.
Uh, well, I, I'm just, my, it's on the article itself, without it being a time. And I have a question in regards to when it says majority voting. I know you went and chose, but.
It defeats because it was not a majority. Is that what I'm saying?
Right, yeah. That's what I'm asking. Wouldn't that be the case?
That would be the case, but in fairness to everybody, I'm going to do a recap. So I will ask everybody in favor to move your cards and I will have people counting. All opposed? We're tied a second time. Says majority vote required, therefore the motion is defeated because we did not have a majority vote. We did it twice. Article four, change the police department. To see if the town will support contracting with the New Hampshire State Police to do regular patrols and non-emergency calls. This coverage to be in addition to the emergency coverage now provided to the town of Dalton and to be paid for with the fifteen thousand in the operating budget for the police department. If this article does not pass, we will retain our current police coverage. Motion?
I make a motion to accept article four as read.
Second that motion. The floor is open to discussion. Yes, sir.
Kenyon Todd, level one eighty-five, Landry Road, Dalton. I have a question about this. If we approve this, does that remove the police department line from the budget?
No, the police department line will still stay there and we'll use the fifteen thousand dollars in the line currently for this additional support of the state police department.
Isn't there other duties that the police department were performing above and beyond, you know, patrol work, like, um, sex crimes or registry and pistol permits, things like that? That's not going to be covered anymore by our police department? So those, those services will be eliminated? If the money's all going to patrol, those things will be eliminated, am I, am I wrong?
The pistol permit, if you are not required to have them, if you want a pistol permit, the board of selectmen can send it out to state police and they will do a background check and for the pistol permit. Um, as far as the sexual registry, I believe that, um, state police will cover them, they will check on their address. They need to register with state police. Those services will, they'll be there. So I think at this point, our police department was just doing a few admin things, not, not any other calls per fact.
Well, you know, it's always been my hope that we could reconstitute the police department.
And that would be awesome. I, I totally agree with you on that. The problem is the cost and to find officers that we, one officer.
I thought I had the floors.
Oops, sorry.
Anyway, I spoke to John Paul today about this. And he said with the fifteen thousand dollars that you're proposing to pay for the service, you're gonna get about three hours of patrol a week. you're proposing, to pay for the service, you're gonna get about three hours of patrol a week. I think we could make better use of the money than giving it to the state police for coming, you know, sleeping on a Sunday morning from three to six. I, I would oppose this, thank you.
Anybody else?
Sir?
Yeah, I'll educate anybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Matt, bedroom, hallway, Road, Dalton. Answer everyone, anyone have questions?
Sir, please address me.
All right, so, the moderator, how are you? Does anyone have any questions regarding this, so they can get facts and not hearsay?
Are there any questions in the audience that anybody wishes to ask about this, and your qualifications, sir, to answer?
I'm a state police sergeant, out of Troop F.
Thank you. Anybody who, yes, sir, you may turn in.
Uh, Frank, toll of seven four nine Dalton Road, granted on the paysal tolls. Hey, um, to see if the town will support contracting the New York State Police to do regular patrols and not emergency calls, the coverage, the emergency coverage now provided, who provides that coverage?
You get your state police.
And it says up there that you are not gonna do that.
No, the-
On top of that.
On top of, well, we, we do need, I mean, the crime rate, the top of the hill starts to drop, so we do need more coverage, and the state police are doing a hell of a job, but we still need people in the area, um, to fight this stuff that's happening. Um, I don't like living near a meth house, so.
Does the board, this, this gentleman?
Um, I have, can we answer this? Yes.
Yes, okay, sir. Yes, you may.
Good to go.
I don't, okay.
Can I speak to that, or how do you want to do this?
Yeah, into the-
I'll educate them.
I understand that, but the protocol, the protocol is need, it is clear.
Okay, so, looking at Article Four, as far as, yes, the way it was written isn't exactly how this works. State police currently and will always have primary responsibilities in a community under three thousand, that's the way the law works, look at under our policies and procedures. Currently, the town of Dalton allocates fifteen thousand dollars for the police department, which consists of John Paul. God bless John, he's done a great job over the years, he has one hell of a record service, unfortunately, as everyone can attest, and us specifically, he's not doing his part anymore. So, this is a means to utilize our tax dollars, the fifteen thousand dollars, to subcontract extra duty patrols within the town of Dalton. So, what does that mean? That means with fifteen thousand dollars, depending on how the board wants it, and through the taxpayers, however they want to appropriate it, that money will be used as additional directed patrols in the community, specifically during that point in time, as far as what they want, is it once a week, is it twice a week, it's all based on the board and the money set forth. That will, if the town accepts it, that will be brought to the upper echelons within the state police, out of Troop F, and then they will reach an agreement with the town before any tax dollars will be appropriated. If this passes, those who are opposed, typically what happens-